Hi, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee for the Nashville Board of Education. It's Tuesday, December 10th, and it is now 4:34 PM. So I'm calling this meeting to order, and I am here. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
And Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Okay. And we also have Mr. Gray and Mr. Smith, Mr. Rodriguez, and I'm sorry, I don't know you got your names.
Mike Davey with EEI.
Chris Clorite with Control Technologies.
Clorite, you said, was your last name?
Clorite, C-L-O-R-I-T-E.
Thank you. Okay, so the first thing that we have on our agenda is the Nashville High School South Greenhouse Project. Okay. I guess you guys mind going to there, to the podium? Okay.
Hi, I am Heather Dubois. I am a Family and Consumer Sciences teacher over at Nashville High South. I am basically coming in requesting us to move forward. I have been awarded a NEFI grant or NEF grant that covers all the expenses for it. We had a previously very successful program. I will show you. We had a Nash Telegraph posting. It shows the old greenhouse that we had. The young ladies that you see in the top picture, just to kind of share a little story, it's very heartwarming. The one in the very center, when she experienced this for the first time, she got very warm and fuzzy inside in terms of, she did this whole moment of, "This brings me back to my home country," and it just gave a very heartwarming feeling to the teacher that was doing this. I personally do a lot with gardening. I don't live in the city. I live in a neighboring town, but I have a lot of history and personal experience on my own. It is something that I've seen firsthand as a successful program over at South. I did it for two years. Unfortunately, the pandemic hit. It shut everything down. When you have a building that is shut down, that does not have, they were right at the cusp of getting my electrical hooked up, and it didn't happen. So unfortunately, that greenhouse was demolished. And so the space is there. I have a shed, I have tools, I have the heater, I have the grow lights. I have everything that is needed, and I'm just looking to purchase the greenhouse to replace what once was and to pick up where I left off prior to the pandemic.
And if you want me to give real quick, Andrew Morin, Regenerative Roots, do live at 191 West Hall Street in Nashville, been working with Nashville High North on their farm-to-school program over the past eight years, helped construct an educational garden there along with an educational orchard. And I've been working with Heather and everyone else at Nashville High South towards the development of the greenhouse and a potential community orchard, either fall 2025 or spring 2026. But the greenhouse, we're hoping to construct either with the construction, VOTEC program and/or volunteers this spring because we've been able to secure some funding towards such. I guess just acting in a complimentary fashion, it's helping.
Community connection that supports and has supported. We've raised beds there. He's helped me get grants. And the proposal was all like people involved. I'm assuming everyone got a copy of it to see. Gave some history, you know, once what was, with the future growth. I was on track for two years, and it had so much momentum going, so.
How many kids were doing it every year?
So my classes directly, just my classes alone, easily over 80 kids, but that also was growing. There is a huge, I will tell you personally, it was very discouraging, shut me down a lot to see so much work and time put into something. What has really gotten my motor moving again with this is all of the people within my community of Nashville High South who have continued to revisit, are we ever going to see a greenhouse again? I stole the plants in my garden from your plant sales. There has been so much from my community. It sparked and reignited, okay, I need to do this again.
How come the greenhouse had to be demolished?
So because of the electrical not getting hooked up, we could not finalize getting the heater, basically the HVAC piece in there. So mold started to grow, but there was no, we were not given any options, basically. And the reasoning was given was because of the wood structure and the mold that was growing, it basically, there was a leader in place that decided to demolish it. This time around, we are going with a company that is well-known, and so there shouldn't be any question about the structure of it. And we have the HVAC, we have the people involved that have agreed to make this happen as quickly as possible so we don't have that happen.
So the grant from the NEF will pay for the building, the HVAC, the construction, everything?
So the only thing basically that's needed for purchasing right now is the greenhouse kit itself and then some supplies, just like framing basically at the bottom. But things are covered 100%. In addition to the NEF grant, I have done my own fundraising. So there is, I can actually give you a figure. I made sure I went and looked. So through my gardening club, through fundraising, I currently have $9,139.32 for this project.
Oh, that's great.
I've been working hard. I'm just looking for everyone to say, yes, move forward, purchase it, and make it happen.
And if there is, I don't really foresee any cost overages, just because we're going to be working with the construction VOTEC, and I have some experience building greenhouses previously. But there is a couple local community donors that are donating up to $1,000 if there is some overages, or Heather needed some additional supplies as well.
I think, Reagan, just from some clarity from the finance end, Sean and I had a conversation, you know, obviously, we're in support of this. It's coming to the Finance and Ops Committee for more or less FYI and approval. We don't anticipate any cost from the district standpoint, as they mentioned, the CTE program and the students at Nashville South will be able to assist in that. So Sean, anything else to add?
No, I think they got everything covered. The electricity and water are already there, just stubbed off, so it's easy enough to relocate them and use them.
Okay. All right. Do you have any questions, Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So I guess I wanted to know who's going to maintain it after that? That was one of the important questions that we've learned over time, to ask who's going to be responsible to maintain it after this. Will it be something that the district does or that the clubs continue to support solely?
So I think, looking at you, Heather, in the past, the school itself has gone ahead in taking care of everything. We don't anticipate that changing whatsoever, and it's a good learning opportunity for the students as well.
There's a lot of people that want, I have to kind of tell everyone to wait and let me get everything going, but there's a lot of interdisciplinary interests in the community, just in the Nashville-South community is what I mean. And I mean, I've done outreach, like connecting with the community in a lot of different ways before COVID. Unfortunately, as we all know, it shut a lot of things down that just never resurfaced. Unless something devastating happens to me, I am around for many years to maintain this, and it's part of my department. So I see the growth happening where the future momentum of this would be continued with somebody within our NTC, CTE department.
I love it. It sounds great for the kids to learn hands-on, to get a little dirty and everything. I love everything about it. I just know that that's one of the things that we asked previously.
Yep. And I will say that one of the most immediate things I hope to do is literally getting students to grow herbs and bring them right back into the classroom and use them within my curriculum that I teach. So there's my one immediate goal to happen right away, and that's reaching every student that's in my classroom for a whole, you know, school year. Beyond that, of course, there's tons of stuff to come, so, and as even said, you know, there's connections through him, just like the fruit growth with the tree, so, yeah.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Claffey? I'm just wondering if there might be an opportunity later on for any of the students from Nashville and North to be involved in this as well? I mean, will they have any access to this if it grows?
Nashville North currently has a greenhouse. The real problem with it is access because it's a locked facility in the second story of the building. So we used the greenhouse before COVID for a couple of years, had some aquaponic system going there with an after-school organization, the Green Club, but it was really hard to grow seedlings because you couldn't get access during the weekends. We didn't have a key in order to get in. So I'm not sure, there might be an opportunity for North, but North does have an active Green Club with an educational garden and orchard that they maintain. They're just kind of not able to grow seedlings like they would be in this greenhouse because of an access problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Do you guys want to go ahead and vote? I can make the motion to approve the Nashville High School South Greenhouse Project.
Second. Or so moved, sorry. Are you moving? I'm, I second.
Okay. And everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Aye. So that means all three of us, so good to go. Thank you.
You very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thanks, you too. Next up, we have the Plant Operations portion of the evening, and I guess we're going to start with the potential school building aid projects?
Reagan, I apologize. I think we're going to do a small adjustment to the agenda. We're going to have technology go first, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
And then we'll hop over. Thank you.
Okay.
I promise it'll be under an hour. Thanks for having me. So the Department of Technology is seeking to upgrade five core switches at five elementary schools, including Main Dunstable, Charlotte Ave, Birch Hill, New Surles, and Dr. Crisp. We went through the E-Rate bidding process, which the window is open from late January to early February, actually until March, but the bids close in late February. And we got two bidders from it, one from Inter Systems and the other one from CDW Government. You'll see there's a huge discrepancy in the price of the switches. The switches that we were asking for were Cisco switches. I believe the switches that they were giving us as a quote were Juniper switches, and they were the Big Bopper switches, which is not really what we would need. We just needed a smaller switch to kind of be the brain of how we have the internet at the school. So that's kind of what a switch does. It routes traffic appropriately and efficiently, so. But the Juniper switches that they quoted as that were too robust, they didn't really fit our networking system because we're a Cisco shop and these, and Juniper is a different style of switches. So in the amount of $52,381.55, we are going to go with Inter Systems bid. And part of the E-Rate process is that because of our free and reduced lunch population, it comes at a 60% discount rate. So we pay it upfront, and then the government reimburses us within a calendar year, and that comes through same account, and it goes to the city first, and then usually extends back to the school district.
So that means that although the total is 52,000, we'd be paying really only 40% of that? Or is that already taken off the total?
It's not taken off the total. That's, so we pay the 52,000 first, and then we get the 60% later.
Okay. All right. That sounds great.
Yep. Or we pay for, the 40% is what we pay, and then 60, yeah.
Okay. How long will it take the state to give it back to us? Is that usually within the fiscal year?
Calendar year, yeah. Yep. So it's actually federal government, so actually run through the FCC. So E-Rate is a program through the FCC.
Can you explain to me just briefly what a core switch is?
Sure. Yeah, of course. So everything that we have running in this building, including the Wi-Fi, is run through a single, if you think of it as plumbing, right? It runs through a pipe. So this pipe actually distributes network access accordingly, you know, to different parts of buildings or even different devices. So this, the switch has built-in logic that we tell it to do, and it routes traffic appropriately. So there's no, there's lack of congestion in terms of traffic. There's, and it also, how internet comes in, just comes in through South, and the internet is run throughout the city, connected by fiber, and these fiber connects directly to the core switch, and then the smaller switches below it, which, again, routes traffic or the plumbing better, so throughout the, so it's efficient and usually without interruption.
So does every elementary school have a core switch?
Every elementary, every elementary school, every middle school, and every high school has a core switch.
Is there a plan for when they're all going to have to, they're all going to need to be replaced? Is it like staggered?
Yep. So this is part of the staggering process. So the last time we renewed these switches, I believe, it was either 20, I mean, yeah, 2018 or 2019. So they're about a six-to-seven-year cycle. Before COVID, we actually had not a very good cycle for refresh. It was around 15 years, which is not good. So we are, we are doing our best to keep up with our replenishment for all of our networking equipment, because that is truly the backbone. It's what every process and operation runs off of in the district is, is internet access.
Okay. All right. That sounds good to me. Thanks for the information.
Yep.
Ms. Daniels-Williams, do you have any questions? All right. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of five core switches, and the schools are Main Dunstable, Charlotte, I think, Bicentennial?
Main Dunstable.
Birch Hill.
Oh, Birch Hill, sorry.
Main Dunstable, Charlotte, Birch Hill, New Surles, and Dr. Crisp.
Okay. So those five schools, from Remove the Mystery, which is a division of Inter Systems Incorporated, to Support the Necessary Upgrade for the District's Networking Infrastructure, and the money will come from account 91.1.992225.53628. And can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. And, okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So that's all of us in favor. Thank you. Motion passes.
Told you I'd keep it under an hour.
I particularly enjoyed the plumbing reference. It made me understand that, you know, water into the building.
Strictly for you, Sean.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. So now Plant Operations.
Okay. I put out, sent you a cover memo, just trying to lay out what we're doing. And brief, EEI has been working with us since the late teens. It started out, they won a competition to be our energy performance contractor, and they cut their teeth on the two high schools, where they did a lot of replacements such as LED lighting instead of the fluorescents, changing out transformers and other various things, all called energy conservation measures. They then were the primary mechanical electrical plumbing contractor at Franklin Street and did a good job there. And then were our same thing, MEP firm for Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, which we're still in the middle of, although it's getting, their piece of the work there is fairly minimal going forward. So we all know the issues the city is having with funding school renovations at this point. They spent a lot of money in the school department for the last 10 years or so, and now they need to address issues in other departments. So we're looking for different ways to possibly get this job done, and state building aid is one way, where we can get money coming in from the state, and, but the deadline for applying for that is next April. So we've teamed with EEI to provide you with four schools as potential things we can apply for state aid for. Those four happen to be the next four in my renovation list, so Mount Pleasant, New Surles, Bicentennial, and Dr. Crisp. Just happen to be the four schools that go furthest back in time since the last time they were touched by renovation. So it's, and again, I think in the memo, I said what year those were last touched. Generally, it's 30 years in between renovations, and we're there for two of them and almost there for the other two. So I think, any questions of that part so far?
I have a, I have a couple of questions about the state aid. I was reading a little bit about it, and it seems like they haven't approved that many projects, that there was the moratorium, and then they're still catching up from ones that were already requested a while ago. And then they're still paying for some of the ones that they, that they, that they approved before, before the, before the moratorium. So I was kind of wondering what the chances are of these actually being approved, and whether they'll be approved, all four of them together, or if they'd be approved, like one school or another?
Probably Mike Davey can respond best to that because he's been doing this elsewhere. But yes, they have a number of schools they've already approved for this, and you go into a queue. So I don't, I don't know, if we have, if we have a serious problem with a school, maybe it'll jump that queue, but otherwise, you just get in line for the. We may apply for building aid this year and not get it for three years or four years. That's entirely possible, unless we can make a strong case otherwise. So Mike Davey again is from EEI. You in charge of EEI?
Yeah.
He's in charge of EEI. So he's the president, CEO. And then Chris Clorite is with Control Technologies. They partner quite a bit. We've also partnered with CTI for all of our controls work across the school district. They're in most of our schools at this point. And they've been in, through the middle school project, Birch Hill, Main Dunstable, they've been the primary controls contractor.
Okay.
So if, I can just try and answer that question a little bit more on the chances. So the chances of Nashville submitting all four projects this year and getting all four approved are very slim to none. That being said, we've been involved in projects in Nashville and in Woodsville where they applied, they weren't expecting to get it, and then the other projects either didn't apply or their voters didn't pass the projects, and then they got the funding. And so it's kind of like playing the lottery. Your chances aren't amazing, but you have to be, be in it to win it, right? If you don't apply, there's, there's no chance. My, my understanding is that the current budget has 80, 83 million for state building aid for this year. About half of that is spoken for, and then half, the other half is open to new projects. And projects that were on the list may not reapply. They're, like Amherst has a major bond vote that may or may not pass. If that fails, that frees up the funds that were going to go to Amherst.
Okay.
If I could, there's also a possibility of other funds being available, and Mike will probably talk about it. If we decide that we want to consider geothermal as a primary heating and cooling mechanism, then federal funds may be available. Is that still true, Mike?
Yeah, yes. And yeah, and I have a presentation if I can try and, I don't know how we lower that.
We have to lower that sucker.
What Mr. Smith had talked about, we had done a comprehensive project here at North and South High School that saved several hundred thousand dollars per year at each building by improving the lights and electric. And the goal was always to start here, then move throughout the districts, improve energy consumption with LED lights, solar, better controls, and upgrade the HVAC systems, especially after the pandemic, there was an increased focus on, on improving ventilation. So we, we've had successful projects at four Nashville facilities, and we guarantee the annual energy savings and then come back to the board to show results. And so we were here this, in, back in, I think it was September, we talked about the energy savings from the high school, verified that we have over 400,000 in annual energy savings. And at that time, we were asked by the board to look into the next four candidates for potential projects. And so we looked at those schools, which were Bicentennial, Dr. Crisp, Mount Pleasant, and New Surles. And in general, and I'm going to go through each school in detail, we found that the buildings all have HVAC and sometimes electrical systems that are at or near end of useful life. And so that, when you have, and in general, most of the systems have gas-fired standard efficiency boilers that send hot water out to classroom unit ventilators that are taking outdoor air, heating them up, and then exhausting through the corridors. Most of these classrooms don't have dehumidification or cooling like we have here. And so the question becomes, when you upgrade these buildings and make a capital plan for the next 10 years to replace them, do we replace them in kind, like putting in new unit vents? Or do we look to upgrade to ducted systems with better energy efficiency and dehumidification? So the first decision most of our, most, we ask most school districts to make is, do you, do we want to improve the spaces in kind, like keeping it with unit ventilators that tend to be noisy? Or do we want to upgrade to energy recovery with dehumidification? In the past, every time Nashville has asked that question, they've decided to go more energy efficient and adding dehumidification or cooling in the classroom. So every time we've been at this inflection point, the boards, the passports have said, let's go to the dehumidification, which cools the space down. Without that, you know, there's nothing to fight the 100-degree classroom temperatures. And so when, when North and South High School were renovated, that's what they did. When we did, the new middle school has that, and so do the elementary schools that we're currently renovating. So if we keep in that trajectory and do energy recovery and dehumidification, that's a point where we want to think about our, how we're making our heat. And the federal government right now is providing a 40% of the entire construction cost for municipalities that are willing to go toward geothermal heating and cooling and getting off of natural gas. Now, in general, and I'll go through this on each school, that costs more, but when you factor in the 40% federal rebate, it generally brings the cost similar or even a bit less than a conventional system. So it requires a larger upfront spend, and you get 40% back at the end. You only would make this decision when you have an entire system that's at end of life like you have in these four schools. So this is, you know, and we're not really pushing one way or the other. We just had our first school, which is a vocational school called Essex VOTEC in Danvers, Mass. They just decided, when they looked at, they had one of their campuses that was in a similar boat, when they just, when they saw these options, they said, it probably makes sense for us to go with geothermal, so they did that. Here in Nashville, in 2008, I did the state liquor store off of Exit 6. So if you need an excuse to go to the liquor store, you can go in and check out the geothermal system that they have in there. And that's, that's been working really well. So it's a technology we know works in Nashville. It's, and it's one of those things that the communities that want to go off of natural gas and off of fossil fuel are really pushing us to make this decision. Municipalities that really are comfortable with natural gas, comfortable with, with staying the course. So all the previous renovations that Nashville's done, we've been powered by gas-fired boilers. So that's the way we've gone historically. And without this 40% federal rebate, the economics would probably push you to stay on that course. With this 40% rebate, it at least is worth a discussion of whether we could pursue it. I will say, there's always that question of, could this administration pull back that? And there, when the election, you know, looking at it, election night, I was thinking, yes, we have, so far, there's been, I think, $5 billion spent on this fund, and I think $4 billion of it have gone to red states. So the, the thinking is that it'll be hard to get Congress to pull this program back because it's overwhelmingly benefited Republican states, and it has support from enough Congress members that we think it will stay, but that's, that's obviously a wild card. So decision point one, that we're, we're not looking for any final decisions tonight, but decision point one is, should we stay the traditional course of gas boilers and dehumidification? Or should we look at this geothermal option and explore it further? The other option is, April 1st is the state building aid deadline. Should we apply for all of these or none of those? So those are the, and in general, the state building aid requirement will require a school board vote, so it's not, it's not locking you in because a school board vote. So it's not, it's not locking you in because a school board vote is not, you'd eventually need a vote of the Board of Aldermen if you were to bond it and mayor. However, they want to, they only want to look at projects that are likely to get funded if we apply. So we'll go through those in details, but I think those are the two high level things is, are any of these worthy of school board? And then is the geothermal of interest? So again, the schools that we looked at are Dr. Crisp, New Surles, Mount Pleasant, and Bicentennial. This is about us again. So starting with Dr. Crisp, the gymnasium and, and purple areas were done. Oh, do you have a question?
But it seems like if this is something that potentially needs to be bonded or whatever, I'm wondering why it's in front of finance and ops instead of at least in front of the Board of Education as a whole team, if not to joint schools, the joint special school board, because that's who makes these decisions on these things and has previously in the past. So I was wondering why it's in finance and ops.
I guess I could answer that because you are my conduit to the Board of Ed. This is, historically, we've come through you to get to the Board of Ed. That's the answer to the first part. Second part is a joint special will not take up any project unless the Board of Ed votes affirmatively and specifically sends it to them. So they're, they're just not going to take up any project in the city without the Board of Ed consenting to it first.
So, okay. So I'm just making sure that I understand. You're asking today just for us to be able to send it to the board?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, or, or come back to you with more information if, if there's not enough, right?
Yeah. So this is kind of step one from a more informational standpoint. Are you folks in agreement for Sean and us to move it forward to the Board of Education? At that point, they'll vote on it and we'll move it through the proper channels. So it's more informational tonight to see any additional questions from this team and then we'll prepare for the Board of Ed meeting.
If I, if I could, you'll, you'll see as we go through these that schools in various states of repair, disrepair, age of systems, that sort of thing. So Mount Pleasant is, it's the longest time since we've touched any school. That is definitely the school with most in need. That would, you know, that'd be my first choice of schools to address. Then New Surles is next. And Dr. Crisp and Bicentennial were done at the same time by the same contractor. So those still have another year to go, but it's, so it's Mount Pleasant and New Surles one, two. Of course, it kind of goes back to the other issue confronting you at times is what to do with Mount Pleasant. So it's got to factor in your, your thoughts at some point. But tonight, we're just presenting you with the information so you can see what's, what issues are going on in the various schools and what it would cost to address them.
So I have a question, I'm sorry, before you go on. The pages that have the amounts on it, is one part of, it says HVAC option one and HVAC option two. Which one is for the, the geothermal upgrade and which is for kind of going on with what we have?
When I get to that, I'll.
Okay.
When I, yeah, those are in here, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So Dr. Crisp, fifty-five thousand square foot school with ninety-six addition and then a lot of nineteen eighty-one infrastructure. It has standard efficiency boilers that are nearing the end of their useful life. The rooftop units are also from nineteen ninety-six. The expected useful life of a rooftop unit is about twenty years. So we're at the end of life of the rooftop units. The HVAC controls similarly are at end of life. The classrooms are mostly heated with those unit vents, which are on the bottom left. And that was standard construction in the nineteen eighties. They don't meet the current energy code.
If I could, they don't also, the state won't even consider them for building aid.
Correct. Yeah, so, so building aid, we need to do energy recode and dehumidification. The hot water heater also is from twenty fourteen. The bathroom fixtures are all high-flow fixtures, so now we go more to, to low-flow fixtures when possible. Kitchen equipment, the kitchen needs some work. The, the makeup air is not conditioned. The dishwasher doesn't have an exhaust fan. And the emergency lighting is from nineteen ninety-six. The lights are not dimmable. Some of the lights are LED, but you can see that they're actually covering up some of the lights with, with tarps sort of to, to create dimming effect. The electrical system is, is two oh eight from eight hundred, eight hundred amp. With geothermal, this system would likely have to be upgraded. Fire alarm, also ninety-six, which is end of useful life. There are some build exterior doors that are rusting and some building infiltration from, from water at the roof wall joint that needs to be sealed up. Some ADA issues where the handrails don't extend to the end of ramps and we don't have door openers at all the doors. So from a high-level budget here, we had identified, oh shoot, went too far. We had identified a couple million dollars, or one point seven million worth of sort of architectural upgrades. And then HVAC option one would be a conventional system with ducted energy recovery, new rooftops, new controls and new boilers for about ten point four million to, in that, all the ceilings have to come down. We put in new ductwork and with the dehumidification, we would bring them into the building. That would increase the cost to twelve point four million. However, the federal government would pay forty percent of that under the current law, which would bring the cost to seven point four. So in this case, it, it's actually a bit, it's, it's potentially two and a half million dollars cheaper to do geothermal. And that's where I have that delta after the federal rebate of seven point four.
Can I just say to clarify, because those are some big numbers in front of everybody, right? So hypotheticals, you take option two, we're looking at seven point four million.
Yes.
Right? But then the intention, correct me if I'm wrong, would be to go ahead and apply for some of the state building aid.
Yes.
To offset some of that cost.
Correct.
So we as a district, as a city, potentially would not necessarily incur the seven point four million.
No.
Right? I just want to make sure people aren't falling out of their chairs when you see the numbers up there.
Correct. So i- if you picked option two with geothermal and it, and it came in at seven point four, plus you wanted to address the architectural components up above, which is one point seven. So I should be better at doing math on my head, but let's say that's nine million dollars. Does that sound right? So the state building aid would pay between, between thirty and sixty percent of those costs. So the question is a little bit, do we, do we want to apply for one of these, one of these buildings for this, this round of building aid? Or we can also wait till a future April deadline? But with building aid, there'd potentially be, again, sixty percent of the eligible costs. And then the state's going to tell us which meets their criteria, which doesn't. In general, they're, they're, and I can pull this up on the end, but they have, they tell you what they're scoring based on. One is safety and security is number one. And so, you know, ventilation goes toward that, the fire alarm definitely goes toward that. The other thing is the, the higher free and reduced lunch rate, that pushes you up higher. Schools that have population increases and dealing with those spaces pushes you higher. And then educational space improvement counts. So they, they kind of grade you and figure out what percentage you're, based on how many of those things you're, you're achieving with this project. So that's the first school. New Surles is the next, which again, had a two thousand, nineteen ninety-five addition, a small boiler room addition in two thousand one. And then the rest of the school is from nineteen sixty-eight. Again, boiler at end of life at this school. Unit vents in the classroom and rooftops, looks kind of familiar. The, the cafeteria is served by two units. One was not working while we were there. And again, that's from nineteen ninety-four, so it's just in poor shape. In general, the HVAC controls are in poor shape. There's some nineteen sixty-eight exhaust fans that are still, still chugging along. It's all fluorescent lighting, so there's a good opportunity for energy savings and the emergency lights are from nineteen ninety-four. This, this has Federal Pacific, sixteen hundred amp Federal Pacific service. Good news is that's plenty of power. Bad news is Federal Pacific went out of business well before I was born, so it's, it's, it's very hard to get parts for this, this equipment. So any, any school, we know when we work in Rhode Island, their state, because they've had like fires in some of these panels and then you can't get replacement parts and you have to shut down. So any building that has Federal Pacific, usually that jumps to the front of the line on Rhode Island state building aid applications. So this is an issue that I would flag as a significant problem in this building, is that you have a nineteen sixty-eight panel that doesn't have a backup generator. And it, these panels are known to be, I mean, it's been there since sixty-eight, but i- if, if it breaks, it's, we're going to have to go scavenge used parts to get it running. Some of the roof is twenty-five years old and they're having some leak issues. One of the things that is unique about this space is this top part of the school here, you have to walk through classrooms to get to the adjacent classroom. And so one of the things that we would consider tackling is creating an interior corridor so that you can get to the far classrooms without disrupting the, the two near classrooms. So they saved space back in nineteen sixty-eight by not building a corridor in, in the classroom. So you got to go through that space. I did update this matrix from the one that I, that I printed out earlier. There was a typo on, on this one. But here, we have seven million in non, what I call non-HVAC items. A big part of that is dealing with the, the roofs and also dealing with that interior classroom renovation. It would be about seven million to replace, I gave, here I gave three, three different options on the HVAC. About four million to do new unit vents and boilers, so that's your, like, just to keep it running the way it is with new equipment. Option two is nine point nine million to do conventional ERVs with dehumidification and boilers, or spending eleven point nine to do geothermal. But once again, with that eleven point nine, this would be, that eleven point nine would be eligible for a forty percent grant. This project, like, as you can see, there's, there's many more items at New Surles compared to Dr. Crisp, which means it would make, it would make it a better candidate for a state building aid application. There's a lot more issues here than at the other school. Bicentennial was built in seventy-seven with additions in nineteen ninety-five, so there was clearly a population.
Can I just go back? Can you go back to the, the New Surles? Because you said there were some changes and the, I don't know if you, can you guys, if you look at the New Surles page that we have?
Yeah.
At the bottom of ours, it says total bicentennial.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's the typo.
That was, that's the wrong matrix.
And we don't have any of the other info. So I don't, what, so what's the, so those bottom three numbers are the bottom line with and without?
Yeah.
The state grants?
So you.
And we should just ignore what we have?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Neil, we can get an updated copy of this.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yep. Can you just tell us what the total would be for the New Surles?
With, with which of the HVAC options?
With both of them.
With the G. So you, so options one, two, or three would be either or. So if you were to do all the architectural components, plus the geothermal, it would be eighteen point seven million.
And the federal government would cover?
They'd cover, yeah. The, the federal government would cover forty percent of the eleven million, which would be four point seven million. And then the state government, again, the, if you, if the entire project went in, the state government could do, would do between thirty to sixty percent.
Okay.
Bicentennial.
I guess I'm a little confused. I thought the feds would pay for forty percent of the overall construction budget.
For the, for the entire HVAC, so that includes.
Just for the HVAC piece of it.
Yeah, but it's everything that goes into, so if the electrical service needs to be upgraded, if the ceiling tiles need to come down. So it's anything that's required to make that HVAC project go.
Okay.
But they wouldn't pay for the, adding the corridor, right?
No, correct.
Okay.
Correct. For Bicentennial, again, seventy-seven construction with additions in ninety-five. Again, we have twenty-one-year-old boilers. We have nineteen ninety-six rooftops and those are at end of life and unit vents in the classrooms. They did upgrade the hot water heater. Lighting, again, rooms don't have occupancy sensors, emergency lights are in poor condition and we, we were using coverings to dim the lights again. We have twelve hundred amp service, which should be sufficient for de, for bringing in geothermal or cooling at the school. And that system has plenty of life left. The fire alarms are from nineteen ninety-seven. The doors and weather stripping are in poor shape. There were several ADA issues. There was no ADA toilets in many of the main rooms and we were missing ADA fire, we were missing ADA exits in the main corridors. Again, we have some interior corridor issues here, which we have some of that open concept passing through, passing through classrooms to get to other spaces. Here, we had about two million dollars to do some small classroom renovations, some fire safing, some concrete. And then we had the HVAC options going from fourteen million or twelve million. This, this project, the geothermal, actually came lower than the conventional system, so that, that would make it fairly attractive with sixteen million of total project at And lastly, Mount Pleasant, which I think all of us know have the most overall architectural life safety issues. The school was built in nineteen ninety, in nineteen twenty-five with additions in nineteen eighty-seven. Again, boilers, twenty-one years old. We again consider twenty-year-old about the useful life of boilers. That's been exacerbated, exacerbated by the fact that high-efficiency boilers are now mandated, so it's getting harder to get parts for conventional systems. It's all unit vents. They have thrown in some mini splits. The lighting is all LED tubes. A lot of the doors are in bad condition, non-ADA drinking fountain, a lot of ceilings have damage. Plumbing fixtures are outdated, urinals don't have partition, so you're kind of wide open there. The stair railings are not even close to compliant. There's ADA issues. And here, what I, I want to point out, we have a thirteen million dollar conventional system or potentially on, on the HVAC. We're eleven million to do geothermal. We have fifteen million total project cost with two million of sort of immediate upgrades. I do want to point out that this school could have a comprehensive major renovation, but what we ta, we targeted are sort of the immediate needs for renovation because we know there's been studies about doing massive renovations. These are kind of things that we said really should be done right away, some roof replacements, some electrical upgrade, AD, some minor ADA and some ceiling upgrades. You could, you could justify a complete gut renovation of this school, but these were sort of immediate need type projects. And so what, what we, the intent of sort of this overall first phase was to kind of help us focus on which building, if, whether it's all, are, should we continue this study for and look at potential federal and state aid applications? Is it all four? Is it? Is it neither? Is it just one? That's kind of the intent of this first pass.
I mean, my thoughts are just that we should apply for state building aid for New Surles, because that's the only one that really seems like a big safety hazard with that furnace. I feel like if we put it forward, all of them, the chances are that, you know, the chances are less that we'll get that money. And also, you know, we really can't count on the federal money. And no matter what the state building aid decision is, we're gonna have to go to the city and ask for more money. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that unless it was a safety issue at this point. I don't know what Mr. Claffey and Ms. Daniels-Williams thinks. You guys want to speak to that?
So to your point, just to dig into that a little bit, that's what I wanted to know, is if you, do you apply separately or together for these schools?
Separately.
Okay. And the aid that is provided, if it is provided, stays with that school? Okay. So then it brings me to the numbers, right? When we look at the school, New Surles is one of the ones that needs the most, but has the least eligible, right? So.
So I do think that corridor fix would be eligible, because it would call, it would, it would fix, it would improve educational spaces.
I think, for clarity, the eligibility was, so we almost have two buckets, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. We have a federal grant bucket at that 40% more for the heating and the geotherm, right? And then we also have a state building aid grant that we would apply for. So I think, to your guys' point, is, you know, do we, I think we, as a board and as a school district, need to decide, does it make sense, kind of playing the lottery, to submit all four, knowing that as some of the studies are coming out, right? We know these schools are gonna need some, is there some type of state building aid out there? Federal grants that we can apply for in conjunction to maybe the support that we're gonna get from the city, right? So it's almost like, here's a few different options in addition to some of the other studies we're seeing, based off of the quality and what needs to be replaced in these schools, and being able to say, okay, does it make sense to risk? You know, do we apply for all four? You might get one, you might get four, you might get nothing, right? Or does it make sense to go ahead and really hone in on one specific school? And then I think the broader question is, from a heating element standpoint, do we try to swap over, is what I'm hearing?
Yep. One of the reasons we're asking for this now for an April application is this is not a final report. There's a lot of steps that Sean and I and the administration will need to work for to really hone in and make sure we're applying for the right projects. So it's sort of targeting a building or all four to apply for, and then spending a lot of our resources in the district to work together to hone in the right application.
And where there is an April 1st deadline, kind of what is the true deadline, right? So we have a Board of Ed meeting next week. This will go to the Board of Education. And then from there, there's gonna be some additional approvals before we probably kind of give that green light in whatever direction we go. So what's kind of an end-all deadline that you really need our approval for?
So we've, I would think early January, we would just want to know, do we want to apply for a building and then which ones? We certainly aren't expecting this committee to approve a scope or a dollar amount right now, but just sort of say, this building requires more review. And then that's what we would tailor.
So, yeah. Mr. Claffey doesn't have any more questions?
Oh, I do, or Ms. Stevens. So I want to say thank you for putting this all together. Thank you for the detail. I think that this is a lot of what we've been asking for, that even though they're not the whole buildings, as you have stated, it tells us how long ago, it tells us how much has been fixed, when the last time that it was touched to improve. If you, if we apply for all four, does that hurt us? Or does it, or does each one stand on its own?
They're gonna score each one on its own. The only, the only way it sort of hurts you, and I think if there was, I would just ask, it doesn't hurt to apply for all four. It's a little bit more of our time. And I think, the only thing that I think it makes sense is, I think the state is assuming that if you got all four, that you would want to do all four in that. So that's just kind of, I think it's a two-way thing, right? Like, if you're applying for a grant, do you actually want that grant? You know, do we, could, would you, let's just say you got all four and got a 60% match. Would you want to do all four of those projects? And maybe yes, then maybe we apply.
Yeah, and I think that's an asterisk, right? I think it's gonna depend on several factors as we move forward, between some of the negotiations, some of the funding, all of that stuff, right? So I think we need to figure out, as a board, as a committee, does it make sense to, maybe there's two schools we pick. I'm just throwing out random numbers, right? You know, based off of some of the other data and studies that we've seen, what makes sense the most to apply. But to your point, if we're applying, we're basically saying, hey, we want to apply if we're awarded, then we're anticipating to do the work, right? If we apply regardless, one school, three schools, four schools, or nothing, if there is an award that comes through, when does this work have to be done?
So you have five years. And what they also write is three voting cycles to get it approved. So what I, they're kind of thinking of the towns that vote in March, that you get three bites at the apple. If you have three failed votes, then they would pull it. Now, I don't know how that would work in a city, but if, because they don't really have voting cycles in that same way, where it's annual. You can go to the Board of Aldermen at any month. But you have five years to complete.
I was gonna say to you, like I said, these are your next four projects. We're looking for your advice, your guidance, because it's up to you.
So I said up, kind of upfront, you know, the highest priority schools in my mind are New Surles and Mount Pleasant, not necessarily in that order. But I think my recommendation would be to ask EEI and basically asking us, because we'll have to do a lot of work as well, to concentrate on those two schools for now. Remember, a year from now, we can do the other two schools, or two years from now. One April was an annual deadline. And it does require an awful lot of work. I applied for these grants, somewhat with Mike's help, for the middle school projects, and put all three projects in there. The highest one that was rated was number five by the state. Top three schools got funded, so we just barely missed. But it took an awful lot of time. So I think, just for that reason alone, we kind of limit how much we push forward and just go with two schools. And I, just, we have to decide tonight how to go about this, because there's an awful lot of information here. If you want to do this with a regular Board of Ed meeting, it might be kind of tight with everything else that's on your agenda. Or if you need a special meeting, you guys have to decide that, I think.
One of the things that I'm a little bit concerned about is with Mount Pleasant. If we move forward with asking for a state aid, you know, we had talked about, if we take aid from the state, then they'll start looking at the sizes of the classrooms and all those things that are structurally, we can't really change unless we put in a huge amount of money. And for me personally, I always feel that for that neighborhood, they want a school. And if, and I don't want to take the school away. I would rather that they had a school rather than no school and go to a different area, and that was a perfect school. They don't want a perfect school, they want a school. So I'm a little bit reluctant to send that one in particular to the state aid, but I.
I could add to that, though.
Yeah.
And it probably backs up your approach. So Mike, when you apply for state aid, don't you have to sign something to the effect that this school's gonna remain a school for the next 20 or 25 years? I think there's something, place we have to sign that.
Yeah, that's the intent, especially because in general, most of these are, even if the state is paying their, you know, up to 60%, you're still bonding the other 20%, usually for a 20-year term. So you're kind of taking, the state's anticipating you're taking out 20-year debt service. And so if the school's future is in doubt, A, you're signing off that you're intending to use it, and the bank's anticipating you're gonna use it for 20 years as well.
I think, just based off of some of the additional studies, right, that the city has done, I know we're waiting on some finalized data, right? So I almost think of this as one data point. What do we think here collectively from finance and ops that our recommendation to the broader board would be? Whether it's one school, three schools, no schools, right? Sean's weighed in. And again, this is one data point. So we might pass along, I'm making up hypotheticals, but New Surles, right? And Mount Pleasant, we go to the board for a broader conversation, maybe not a lengthy presentation like this, but a presentation to say, here's what we've uncovered as data points. And the broader board might say, there's unknowns, right, for any school moving forward. Does it make sense, does it not, right? Because obviously, we're not the primary decision-makers here, the end-all, be-all. You know, the Board of Ed is gonna make a decision, then we would have to move forward to have a broader conversation with the city, right? And Dr. Andre, it's not here tonight, you know, but we'll be at the board meeting next week.
I would feel comfortable with that, making a motion to move forward to the board with the, with the, hold on, let me read the thing. With a motion to instruct EEI to apply for state building aid for New Surles and Mount Pleasant. Would you feel comfortable voting on that?
Second.
Okay. And, okay. All right, then, so everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Smith, you have like one more thing for us, right? Okay.
This'll be quicker. So we have two large dump truck plow vehicles. We originally had one, we got in 2008, and another one, 2009. 2008 one has since been replaced. In fact, we received the replacement just this past week. The 2009 is in similar shape. We've been told that it'll survive one more round of inspections, and that'll be it. The one that we just received was ordered about a year and a half ago, a little less than a year and a half ago. So it takes up to 18 months to get these vehicles. So I'd like to replace the second vehicle. The city purchased, allocated $260,000 in its SURF budget. And the cost for this is $248,019.0. It's through Sourcewell, which is the nationwide, they've already pre-bid all this stuff. So the motion on the bottom, recommend the Board of Ed approve the purchase of a 2024 Freightliner Dump Truck with plow and sander from Viking Sivs of Vermont, an amount of $248,019.0, funding from the city's Capital Equipment Reserve Fund.
Do you guys have any questions about this?
This is a new vehicle?
Yes, it is.
Would you, would you know, is it made in the US? It's just, I'm just thinking about, if we don't do it now, is it gonna be subject to some possible new tariff?
Pretty sure it's made in the USA. About 100% positive, though. I can find out.
Well, what do you think? I mean, if I'm worried about buying a laptop for, you know, saving a few hundred bucks now to avoid a possible tariff, this would be a.
I guess the question is, was it made in Mexico or Canada?
Right.
I honestly don't know. I'd have to check that, check into that, which I can find out.
Just another reason to do it now.
Right.
Yeah, with inflation, the way it is, I would say, yeah, I would be in favor of this. So if there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of the 2024 Freightliner Dump Truck with plow and sander from Viking Sivs of Vermont, in the amount of $248,019. Uh, $248,019. Funding is from the City of Nashua Fiscal Year '25 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund.
Second.
Okay. Thanks for the second. And then, and everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're all in favor of that.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, Mr. Gray, is the finance reports and stuff?
Yes, thank you. So if we look at the first finance report that you folks have in front of you, so we're almost towards the tail end of December already, right? If I, I think from a calendar standpoint, we're roughly almost 50% of the way through school. So if we just look at that very last page, you know, we're at 33.9% of our overall expenditure to our budget. Seems pretty well on track for this school year. Last year actually was slightly higher. I think I had right around 40% by the December meeting. So from an overall budget standpoint, we're kind of moving towards a similar trajectory. A couple of things, I guess, just to point out real quick. So if we start back on page one, so, you know, the 51 series, so our salaries and wages, you know, overall about 30% up until the end of November. Again, that's pretty much on track. Same thing with the benefits piece, 36%. Professional and technical services, so our 53 line items as a whole, we're sitting roughly at 53.9%, okay? So a little bit higher than where we were this time last year. Again, as we've discussed at some of these meetings, we are seeing contracted services be slightly higher for some of our positions this year, whether it's our special education positions, some of our vacancies within the teacher spot. So again, an area we're gonna continue to kind of focus on and watch as we get into the new year. Just a friendly reminder, as we get into the new year, we'll actually start to do a forecasting report to make sure we're not going over budget in any specific line item, probably in that February timeframe till the end of the year. Feel free to stop me if there's any questions. The next section, the 54 section, which is your property services. So that bucket as a whole, sitting right around 34.16% spent. You know, that covers all of our HVAC stuff, our ground maintenance. We'll probably see that increase slightly, especially going into the snow season in the winter months with just some plowing and stuff. The next section, the 55s, which is our other services, again, 34% is what we're seeing from a percentage usage standpoint. This section actually has our transportation cost in there, special education transportation, our added district tuition, and a small portion of other contracted services. Again, 34% kind of normal year-over-year as we move forward. The next section, 61s, which is our supplies and material lines. This is where you see a lot of your educational supplies. So we're actually sitting at 55% this year as of the end of November. I know myself and Dr. Andre really, we're trying to educate everybody, right, on the fact of, yes, this is a budget, and this section particularly. and this section particularly has your books and your subscriptions and your periodicals in there, in your educational supply lines. I expect that to be around 50%, and here's why. We should never see that line being less, probably. Otherwise, I would ask the question, why aren't we spending money in that educational supply line, right? We're midway through the school year at this point. That's really where your educational materials, your books, your subscriptions are coming from. So I anticipate that category to actually be a little bit higher spent because we need to make sure we have all the materials in place for the students, right? I'll pause because I think there might have been a question.
Yeah, sure.
So same 61 supplies and materials. Our subscriptions are 113.26%. So that means we've doubled it plus some.
So I think what we need to do is we need to look at periodicals, subscriptions, and books all together, right? Because back in the day, we used to spend a substantial amount on books, like your physical hardcoded books that you probably held in your hand. Now, we're seeing a lot on periodicals and subscriptions, right? And I think when we first started this year, we might have had actually more money in periodicals or subscriptions than a different category. And those, those numbers are going to be dependent upon, are we doing periodicals, right? Or we're ordering online materials versus a fiscal book? Um, so that's probably higher because of what the budget amount was in there. There probably wasn't enough originally budgeted, and we had to move it out of educational supplies or out of books or subscriptions.
But if, but if we mix all three of them together, that brings us to over 213, right? Um, and we're halfway through the school year. How come, like, I, I know that there was some, the subscriptions, can we, for the board meeting when we accept this, can we have some detailed of what these subscriptions really are? Because like, I know that some of them were books, and some of them were other things, like the new, um, learning styles that we pulled out and everything. I would like to see the numbers for that. Because like I said, yeah, we're, we're low in books, but we didn't, you know, every other category seems like it had a lot mu- more in it. So we planned to spend less on books. Like, if we look at the numbers in the year-to-date actual, like, where it started. So like I said, I guess it's concerning that for books and periodicals and subscriptions, that we're already at 213 halfway through. So even if we split each line into our goal being spending 100% of it, that would be 300. So that we still only have 86%, even though the monies are different. There's different categories of money, I, you know? But like, why is it so? I, just an explanation, not only just for me, but for the board and for the public. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, we absolutely can dig into more information around there. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not surprised that subscriptions, based off of, again, a lot of things are not handbooks that you're going to carry, right? A lot of it is probably the subscriptions online, um, especially where there's one-to-one Chromebooks, right? These kids are no longer carrying around backpacks with five or six school books in them, right? Everything is electronic now. That's where your subscriptions come in. And I actually, where the subscriptions, yes, we are over-budgeted in that line at this time. Um, from an overall cost standpoint, you had pointed out, we're sitting at 113% for the subscriptions year-to-date. I would, I would question if that was only 25%. Because again, as we get further into the school year, we shouldn't be spending a ton of money on the subscriptions, the books, the periodicals. Again, we need those materials upfront in order to educate the students throughout the year. So your ask and request is, why are subscriptions? We'll look at periodicals, subscriptions, and books as three line items consolidated together. Um, and then just kind of what the total expense is. But as I mentioned, with the, the way that kind of technology is now, I'm not surprised to see that your subscription line is slightly higher.
Are you expecting to have any big subscription costs going forward?
I would say at this time, there shouldn't be. I mean, we're, we're almost into the end of December, right? I would argue if we don't have a specific subscription to educate these students at this point, you know, that really goes back on the planning piece.
Okay.
All right, so we'll get you some additional details for next Monday's meeting on those three line items. Before I jump to indirect cost, any other questions? No, okay, okay. All right, so that next section, indirect cost, so the 68 other expenses. So the indirect cost, just a friendly reminder there, that actually is based off of, we're seeing it on the budget side as a negative. That's actually revenue we're pulling in. That's why you're seeing it as a negative. The indirect cost allocation comes from the federal grants that we bill on a monthly basis. For the 24, 25 school year, we're actually getting 2.8% back as indirect cost every time we bill a grant. So that's what those line items are related to the 60, excuse me, the 68 hundreds. Um, so, so far this year, we've gone ahead and brought in about $35,000 in indirect cost revenue. We are anticipating throughout this year, we'll be roughly at 220,000. Uh, we'll continue to see that number increase as we continue to bill the federal grants further into the year. The next line items or the next sections are 71s. That's our equipment lines. Um, again, we're sitting at 58.43% overall. Um, this is where your computer equipment lands, your computer software. That's pretty typical. Again, we're kind of 50% into the school year. Um, if we're purchasing any kind of one-to-one Chromebooks or any computer software related to this fiscal year and school year, it really should be purchased by now. So I'm not surprised to see that sitting right at 58%. We were in a similar position last year. And then just the last category, the debt services. It's showing at 100% spent because we've paid the debt payments in the interest payment. Um, so again, overall, I wouldn't say anything big and alarming that I'm seeing when I do a comparison from current year to prior year. Before we jump into the transfers, any specific questions related to the two budget reports, the detailed expense reports that are in front of you?
I don't, I don't have any more questions. I, um, there's, there's so much information on these. And I think that I'm beginning to start understanding it a little bit better, which is helpful. And I, I, you know, I see that it's nice that the different percentages for the, for like the supplies and materials or the debt service, that it's all laid out for us, and that there's only a couple that we should be concerned about, contract services being one of them. But that's something that we, you know, it, it's not a cost that is due to us being irresponsible. It's a cost doing, due to us meeting the needs of the kids. Um, so, you know, we'll have to talk further down the road about how we're going to manage that. But I don't see anything else really to be concerned about here.
Okay. Excellent. All right, we'll jump into the transfer report then at this point. Um, so the first budget transfer you have in front of you is one for $1,000. We're just moving money out of one educational supply line um, and out of the furniture line there. So it's just moving it for, for one of the specific elementary schools, almost out of one, uh, expense category of the furniture line and moving it over to educational supplies. The next one that you have in front of you is actually a, a pretty substantial transfer. So this is a transfer that actually was done to adjust the middle school budgets for this fiscal year based off of the student count. So remember, when we do these budgets, we go ahead and take a snapshot of the student headcount as of October 1st. So when we went ahead and built the budget last year in the February, March, April timeframe, we went ahead and built the school budgets based off of the October 1st student headcount. Now that everything is kind of settled, October 1st of this year, October 1st of '24, we've gone ahead and saw that at McCarthy, the numbers are lower than what we anticipated the student headcount to be there compared to Penachuk. So we actually had to move some money out of McCarthy Middle School and give some additional funding over to Penachuk. And that's why you're seeing this pretty substantial transfer. Um, you're seeing all the detail of where the money's being pulled out of and transferred into McCarthy. I mean, excuse me, out of McCarthy into Penachuk.
Mr. Gray, there's not a, there's not a total on this? If, um, if we looked at the from and compared it to the two, that the totals should be the same?
Yep, absolutely. It wouldn't have gone systematically through the system if it wasn't. Um, I can tell you for, for an estimate, I believe we moved about $24,000 between $24,000, $25,000 out of McCarthy into Penachuk.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, the next one that's in front of you is actually a transfer from the curriculum office. So they had over $202,000 sitting in subscriptions that they didn't need. Um, and the money should have actually been budgeted into educational supplies and testing supplies. Um, so we're moving money out of subscriptions and moving it into educational supplies and testing supplies.
So is that what we were just talking about? Because, so it's not actually over 113%? We spent it, but we moved it to somewhere else?
I would clarify and say, we didn't spend the $202,000 in subscriptions. We actually moved it out of subscriptions and moved it into the educational supplies and testing supplies line. So that could be one of the factors, for sure, why you're seeing so much in the subscription line already spent.
Which line would that be in on the main?
So on the main sheets, yep. So if you look at the 61s,
Mm-hmm.
That's where all your subscriptions, your educational supplies, everything's sitting. So if I go back to the detail.
Yep, so, yeah, 61, 135, the third one, I got it.
So three down from the top, it says 61, 135, educational supplies. So we're talking about that line. Um, the next one would be your 61, 249, your material, your testing material line. So we basically added money to educational supplies and testing materials. And then if you scroll midway down the page, your 61, 830, your subscription line. We've actually gone ahead and taken money out of subscriptions, right, and moved them to the two additional lines.
So definitely looks like it was very much needed because would these numbers reflect before they were transferred or after? Because like, the only reason why I'm asking is because like, the third line right now is at 53.09, but we're transferring money into it, is it?
Well, your educational supply line is saying, as of the end of November, we've gone ahead and spent 53,000, uh, excuse me, 53%.
Right.
If you look at your report, in my sheets, it's the first uh, chunks of reports. Up at the top of the page, it says Detail Expenditure Report. If you look at that spreadsheet and you scroll midway down to where it says 61 Supplies and Materials, this report shows your overall original budget and then your available budget. And if you go to page three of five, you'll see for subscriptions, our original budget was $476,083. You now see your available budget because we did this $202,000, uh, transfer. Your available budget is showing, which almost classify that as your new budget because there's a budget transfer, is $274,000. Right, so if you scroll over, we've gone ahead and expended $310,000 to date. So that $310,000 is being pulled off of your original budget of 274. So that's why it's showing it's over by 100%. Sorry, I'm a visual person. I'm like trying to point it at you like I'm screen sharing, and I'm not.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome. All right. So the next one is a transfer to move some money out of furnitures and fixtures over at the CT program. We needed to move $1,000 into educational supplies to actually buy some cosmetology supplies. So the account balance in the cosmetology line needed to increase for educational supplies. We moved $1,000 out of furniture and fixtures and moved it into educational supplies. Uh, the next budget transfer you should have in front of you is the Nashua Athletics. So these were funds that were all originally budgeted in North. And they really should be, um, they should have been separated between North and South when we went ahead and did the overall budget. So this is just actually pulling some money away from North Athletics and moving them into the proper buckets at South Athletics. Um, the next one that you see in front of you, Penachuk Middle School, a budget transfer for $1,000. This was to go ahead and purchase some headphones. So a supply line, educational supplies, um, for the Science Department. And then the last budget transfer you should have in front of you is for Nashua High South. And it is for the water filtration, uh, excuse me, station. So it really should be coming out of, um, the 7199 account um, versus out of the 54, 450 account. So we needed to do a budget transfer in order to pay for the water filtration system.
Any questions? No, no questions. Um, okay, so. Okay, so we have to vote to accept the transfer for, these were for October and November, right?
Yes, that's correct. We did not meet in person last month in November, so these are October and November budget transfers.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the Fiscal Year '25 October and November transfer reports.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, that's it. I, I don't, we don't need to make a motion for the financial report, right? That's just informational? Okay.
Yeah, my understanding, I think we say this every month, it's more informational.
I know, it's, it's in the book, there's a spot to put it, so it kind of freaks me out every time. I'm like, what am I, am I doing this wrong? But okay, thanks, I guess that means we're all done. So...
Motion adjourned.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Neil. Okay. And so we're, oh, we had to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're adjourned at 6:12 PM. Thank you.